All right, everyone ready? Feel good? All right, I'd like to call this Tuesday, January 21st, school committee business meeting to order. Mrs. Yell, can you take the roll, please?
Ms. Jordan Reaven.
I'm here.
Juliet Walker.
Present.
Brianna Higgins.
Here.
Brian Callahan.
Here.
Andrew Bogart.
Here.
Sarah Hall.
Here.
Catherine Shaw.
Here.
All right, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any public comment this evening? Okay, I don't think there are. Ms. Yell, let's go ahead and double check. Okay. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. As a consent agenda, we can vote on all of the items on that agenda at once unless anyone would like to remove anything and discuss. So the items on the consent agenda are the warrant, which was provided to you in advance via email, as well as the January 6 minutes. Are there any items from the consent agenda that if anyone would want to discuss separately? Okay, then I will accept a motion to accept or approve the consent agenda, which includes the warrant and the 1625 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any, that's it. Let me just say, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the votes are aye. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the student representative report.
So, in the Brezner Hand, our students are diligently working on their mid-year dibbles and eye-ready assessments in math and literacy. These assessments provide valuable, up-to-date data that enable our teachers to personalize instruction effectively and empower our interventionists to initiate a new cycle of targeted support. In the preschool and kindergarten, they're asking you to join us on Thursday, January 30th, for their preschool and kindergarten information night. The preschool session will be 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., and the kindergarten session will be 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. Families are invited to begin the evening with a classroom tour, which will be followed by a brief informational session in the gym. All registration details have been updated on our website, and they look forward to seeing you there. Thanks to the efforts of Aya El Khatib, NHS student and her family, the Brezner Hand NEF Book Vending Machine is full of new books for the new year. Aya's book drive was incredibly successful, and we appreciate the support of our wonderful community. Students at the Brezner Hand earn a token to the NEF Book Vending Machine when they meet personal literacy learning goals. At this time, 300 Brezner Hand students have received a book. In the Mullen, the 5th grade is going on a field trip to the Museum of Science as a part of their study of the planets. And the 4th grade is going on a field trip to the Songus Industrial History Center, to learn about the impact of human migration on culture and community over time. In the NOC, the NOC Career Speakers Series continues to be successful, with our third round of speakers on tap for this Tuesday. The NOC will be having a spirit week next week for students to have a little fun during the winter months, and tech and stage crew sign-ups have begun for the spring musical production of Newsies. Meanwhile, in the high school, Fall Act students serve as this year's Portrait of a Graduate ambassadors during the Staff Development Day. These students present their educational journeys to the entire NPS faculty. Our hearing what lessons have inspired them and how educators have impacted them. Our teachers are able to better understand what they can do to make learning powerful. Thank you to Alex Ames, Callie Curran, Colin Fuller, Kira Garrity, Cooper Grant, Brendan Grossman, Lizzie Homer, Charlotte Keely, Sophie Lavalley, Emerson McCormick, Laney Pear, Theo Roberts, Camille Russey, Cedar Schumacher, Jose Velazquez Perez, and Jalen Wise. And that will be it.
Well done, Mr. Rick May.
Great.
Thank you for all those needs. Well done. Any questions for our student representative? Thanks so much. Next item on the agenda is an update on the athletic director hiring process.
A very comprehensive process, and we'll call up, actually, Mr. Wolf and Pam Keely, come on up.
I was off the hook.
No, you're not off the hook. I just wanted to credit Pam and Mr. Wolf for really doing a thorough process and really give the committee and the community an update of where we're at and what the next steps are.
Thank you all for having us. So first of all, I'd like to take a moment before I get started on the update and just extend both Andy and our sincere thanks to all of the members of the screening committee and the people that attended the community forum. To this point, their input and their insight into the process for us has been really invaluable, I would say. And now to provide an update on where we're at with the athletic director. So, the process started with a screening committee, so we had a number of applicants for the position. We forwarded about 20, between 20 and 22 resumes to the screening committee. The screening committee then took that group down to eight people that they wanted to actually bring in and interview. So, that same screening committee, and I will tell you after who that screening committee was comprised of, but they then interviewed those eight people, and they cut that group in half down to four. So we currently have four finalists. Those four finalists participated last week in a community forum, and that, the community forum consisted of groups of stakeholders. So we had a group of coaches, a group of parents, a group of students, and then a group of what we're calling athletic interested partners. So, people that work closely with athletics. We had Kerry O'Donnell from the NEF. We had Molly Hogan, who is our athletic trainer. We had Kathy Cutter, and we had Stephanie Phillips, who works with our performing arts. Kathy Cutter is the administrative assistant. So that was the fourth group. We had each of the candidates proceed through and answer a set of questions within that forum, which we've gotten really overwhelmingly positive feedback about. So the way the forum was run for that piece of it was we had each of the groups managed by the groups of stakeholders that they represented. So we had Amber Barberi, who is a parent that worked with our parents, I mean with our students. We had Henry Thurston, who was one of the students. We had, I have the list here, bear with me. Ryan Gasparo, Olivia Cruz, and Riley Lombard. So they represent different sports within the high school community, and they handled the student piece and asked the questions of the candidates. For the parents, as far as the people that participated there, we had Erin Coffin, who is a parent, a current parent of an NHS student, as well as some coming up. We had Lynette Kenny, who is both a parent and also a coach of the field hockey team. And we had Melissa Yim. So those were the parents that actually facilitated the parent forum and asked the questions of the candidates. In the coaches, we had Lori Salazzo and Jayden Maderos, who is also, both of those are coaches but also teachers within the district. So they facilitated the coaching piece. And each of those groups had those members, so about, we had probably 15 coaches, about 30 parents, and I would say probably between 30 and 40 students that went. So there was a good turnout of people in each of their respective groups. If I can take a step back and just talk about the screening committee. So on that committee, we also did the same thing. We had stakeholders from each of the groups within Newburyport Athletics. We had parents, and on that group, we had Joe Devlin, who is a parent of current students and also graduates. We had Matt Lakava, who is, has a current student as well as someone that is coming up from the middle school. So he represented, as did Joe, both groups, middle school and high school. We had Elizabeth Pehegan, who is a parent and also a representative of the boosters. And then we had Dana Reimer, who is a parent of both a middle school athlete and a high school athlete, and has also been heavily involved in Newburyport youth soccer, as has Erin Coffin, who was part of our screening or community interviews. For coaches, we had Sean Blue, who is the high school soccer coach. We had Shannon Haley, who is the field hockey coach. Megan Marler is a field, excuse me, a cross-country coach. And Ben Smolsky represented the football team. Perhaps the group in that screening committee that was really insightful in their feedback were the students. We had Rachel Casson, who is a junior and is a field hockey and a track athlete. She was recently elected on the day of the first screening committee as captain of the field hockey team. And Bobby Patel, who is an athlete, and both of those two students added really wonderful insight into the process on the screening committee. So, we are moving forward, the four candidates, to an interview with Andy and the administrative team at the high school. Within the next few days, we've just confirmed that with the four candidates, and we are hoping to have a decision by the end of January. So that is where we are at with the athletic director process. Questions?
Any internal candidates with the finalists?
We do have an internal candidate that made it to the finals, yes. Yep?
Great.
So, I'm happy to share the names of the finalists, if anyone is interested. We have Erin Avud. He is the current athletic director at Winnicott. We have Anna DeVito. She is the current athletic director at Font Fawn Academy. We have Richard Pace, who is currently a teacher at Newburyport High School. And we have Stephen Bernadette, who is the athletic director at Minnetec Regional High School, which is located in Wilbraham, Massachusetts.
Any other questions for Ms. Keely?
Were there any female candidates?
Anna DeVito is one of the finalists.
Oh, okay.
And she is a female candidate.
Oh, I missed that, okay.
That's okay. I spoke quickly, so.
Ms. Keely, did, you know, we did a similar sort of COOJ forum for the special ed search, director search. Was the feedback that came from those community forums, was that informing the process at all, or is more just, is that going to be considered as part of the interview process?
So, I think the way that feedback, and that's a great question, because that was one of the things that we took away from our last search. So yes, that feedback, Andy has looked at that feedback. We did gather all of the feedback, so we have it all regarding each of the groups have their own method for giving feedback, and we've looked at all of that feedback.
Okay, great.
Yep. Any other questions?
What is the common themes of feedback that you're hearing? Is it somewhat split, or do you have a frontrunner at this point?
I think I would hesitate to say that. I think there's been feedback from both the screening committee that moved the four people forward, and then the community forum had a lot of feedback, because it came from a lot of different groups. But I think each of the candidates is being moved forward based on the information that we're getting for very different reasons. They bring different strengths. So I think we have four really qualified people. It's just now finding what the best fit is based on what the high school is looking for.
All right, if there's nothing else, thanks so much. Thanks for coming and giving us an update.
You're welcome.
All right, the next item on the agenda is an update on the MSBA Celebratory Repair Program.
There you go. We'll defer that. It's like a relay race. Next is Mr. McSweeney. We'll give the committee an update of where we're at and what the next steps are.
I get the boring stuff. I feel like it's all the exciting stuff. So, yeah, so we're still moving forward with the MSBA project and with the MSBA on the roofing projects, I should say. The biggest thing is, we just got an email last week that they've contracted with a company called STV, and they're going to be coming out and doing the onsite surveys. I know last time I was up here, we talked about the big Excel workbook that they sent us, and we're going through and getting all that information gathered. All that information being gathered is for when they come onsite. So they're going to be coming out February 25th and 26th and being in all four of our schools, meeting with all the principals and all the stakeholders. And part of that is all the data gathering. So all, filling out all the data on these Excel sheets is in preparation for these meetings, so that when they come out and they're asking their questions, we already know the answers. We have the information in front of us, ready to roll. And again, this is all part of the MSBA's project to get data on all the schools statewide, and all the buildings, and, you know, how they're being used, what's in them, the age of equipment, the age of the schools, and so they can start planning ahead for, you know, projects that might be coming down their way in the future. So part of this is all involved with that. We also have two virtual meetings coming up with them. One is on January 29th, and that is going to be with that STV group in preparation for their onsite meetings, again, to make sure that we're prepped and ready to roll for them, so that the meetings onsite are productive and well worth their time. The other meeting that we're going to have is going to be on February 5th, and that is with the MSBA, and that is with the major stakeholders and people that are going to be running the projects coming down the line, you know, the two roofs for each school. So we have a list of people that will be attending those. So right now, it's kind of still rolling, the train's still rolling down the tracks. We're doing all of our data gathering. I've met with our facilities team and filled out all our information. I have meetings scheduled with our IT department to go through their portion, and I'm going to be scheduling meetings with all the principals and other stakeholders within the next week and a half to fill in the rest of the data to make sure we're ready to roll when they come out, so.
So, just for clarification for people who might be watching, what are the projects that are being considered for the Accelerated Repair Program?
So we have the two projects.
And they're both roofing projects. One is the auditorium at the high school, and then the other is the NOC Middle School. There's a bigger portion of the NOC Middle School, it's over the auditorium, and then over some of the classroom areas.
But the high school is pretty much, the auditorium roof, that's the biggest concern right now.
Okay, and just to clarify, they could still visit the Brezner Hand even though that's not on the list?
Yes.
Should be part of that inventory?
It is, yeah. That's part of the MSBA's project to get inventory of all the schools and where they're all at at this point.
Any questions? Mr. Callahan?
Is the roof project just the roof itself or the stuff that's on there? Like, I asked as of the budget and finance meeting the other day at city council. Some of the councilors wondered if we had things similar to the water heater that are about to break. And I know that the chillers have been on the list, like priority one.
The chillers are on a completely other side of the building.
So they wouldn't be included in this.
No, no, they wouldn't be. So one of the things that the MSBA is doing with any of the Accelerated Repair Programs for roofing projects is they are coming in, and part of the design process is going to be make sure that the roofs are going to be solar ready. So if four, five, six, 10 years down the line, we decide we're going to put more solar panels on, that roof will be ready for that. And the same thing at the NOC Mullen School. At the NOC Mullen School, there is already solar panels on there, and part of the roof that is going to be repaired, it does have solar on it, so part of the project will be to take the solar panels off, repair the roof, put the solar panels back on.
Thank you.
There's all the mechanicals up there at the high school, anyway.
Can I ask you something, just because it's related and you're here already? Do you mind, or do you mind if Mr. McSweeney gets the things that are like, that were listed as priority one and two that are on, or things that we think are nearing the end of life? Because the city council has seen those priority one and two things for many, many years and has voted against them each time that CIP comes up. So I think it'd be good if we had a, this stuff could be about to break, small thing, and give to the council, so they can't say, well, how did you not know about this?
Can you just clarify, are you talking about the items on the roof itself?
Well, I mean, some of the things in the priority one and two on the capital improvement plan that we submit every year happen to be things on the roof, like the chillers and stuff like that. And they brought up in the budget and finance the other day that, you know, are there items? Because the water heater was, the only reason we didn't know was because it never had the normal problems like brown water in the room or whatever. So, you know, they're questioning that, and I'm not really sure why, actually, but in the event that we do have things that are, you know, nearing their end of life, I think it'd be good to have a plan already and say, these are the things that are going to cost $100,000 ahead of time.
Yeah. Just want to, just a reminder that they do have that new rating system now, which hopefully would work to our favor. So it's not going to just be priority one and two anymore, if I understand correctly. We're going to have the rating system, which I assume you've already begun.
Yes.
And that hopefully will support what you're talking about, so that those priority items will pop out with the new rating system.
So, one thing I can say is that we have a great maintenance team here, and they've done a fantastic job, you know, over the last, you know, 10, 20 years of maintaining all the equipment we have. And I think that's a testament to them and why, even though we have equipment that is, you know, 20 years old now, it's still operating at a high level and still really maintaining and doing what it needs to do because of the staff we have here and how well they've maintained this equipment. Now that being said, yes, we do have equipment that's 20 years old, and it is reaching the end of life. And you took the words right out of my mouth. Yes, we are going to be utilizing the city's new CIP process to identify those items and to try to get those in the plan, so that in the next five, six years, we can preemptively put in and get them replaced. Now, you know, we're talking about the chillers. One of the big thing with these chillers is they're 20 years old. And just like the water heater, it's old technology. So, I might speak a little bit out of turn here and say that I think it would be kind of a wrong step to just put a new chiller up there. I think we need to be looking at, you know, energy savings and what we can do to better outfit that high school with newer technology and newer equipment, whether we're going heat pumps, or we're doing a heat pump chiller, or we're going to go with the VRF system and redo a good, you know, portions of the building at a time. And I've had conversations with Molly Attenborough about this, and what other grants out there, energy grants that we can go after, and what can we do, and what would the appetite be from the city, to look at the high school as a whole and say, what, where should we be taking the school? Right? It's a beautiful building. We don't want it to go anywhere, nor should it go anywhere. So how do we bring it to the next step? How do we bring newer technology in and make it a better, a better place? So I think that's kind of in the process that we're at now, but again, using this new city's new CIP process will bring a lot of that to light, and we'll be able to move all that stuff forward.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. McSweeney?
Just on the panels, do we know how old the solar panels are that might be taken off in order to repair the roof?
Inresco is our solar company, and they're up there all the time doing maintenance on them, and they own them. So every time I've been up there, they're in good shape, they're in, you know, they're producing quite a bit, so. I don't see any reason. And taking solar panels off and putting them back on is something that people do all the time, residentially and commercially. So it's not a...
Yeah. No, that's, that was part of the, there was interested parties, and just for clarity, we don't own the panels.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McSweeney.
All right, next item is an update on the Playful Learning Grant.
Yes. We'll call Lisa Ferlong up, but notifying the school committee, we were very excited to receive the Playful Learning Grant a couple weeks ago, and Ms. Ferlong and the team is starting to put a plan in together, and we'll have her just update everyone where we're at.
Yeah, so I'm really here speaking on behalf of the Brezner Hand School, who have done most of the work. Under the leadership of Jamie Sokolowski, the principal at the Brezner Hand School, they started last year. Desi came out with the Playful Grant last year. We were very interested in it, but really weren't in a position to apply yet. But the Brezner Hand didn't wait till the next round of applications. They've had, excuse me, a group of teachers who have been running a PLC, using a book called The Pedagogy of Play. This is the text that the whole Playful Learning Institute grant is based upon. So we have 17 teachers who've been a part of that, run by two other teachers. They've been working on getting through the text, going through a podcast that's associated with the text, and learning about the process of incorporating more playful opportunities within the content of the teaching at the elementary level. And the focus of the grant is on pre-K to 3, so it's really just a Brezner Hand project. We have a team of two teachers at every grade level, as well as our ESL, we have special education, tech integrators, and Jamie as the principal will be a part of it as well. It's an 18-month grant. Our teachers will take workshops, they will work collaboratively with a coach who comes into the school and helps them to develop their lessons, roll them out, get feedback on them. The grant will provide opportunity for them to purchase materials in their classroom to be more playful. And the idea is that we're taking some of our current curriculum, MyView, for example, for literacy, or Ready Math, and looking at what are some of the standards we're trying to teach? What are some of the lessons that come from the curriculum? And how can we make them more playful? So, we're really excited about the work, and it should start soon. It's about an 18-month grant. It's a awesome $175,000 grant. $100,000 goes back to Desi through, for coaching and a evaluation component, and the other money is spent for stipending the teachers, paying for travel, and classroom materials to support implementation.
Thank you. Questions?
I just wanted to thank you for all this work that you're doing in the Brezner Hand team. I know they spent a lot of time on this. They took a huge initiative to start this on their own, and I'm really excited about it. The, one thing in particular that I'm really excited about is, this is certainly a philosophy that I believe in, that kids learn through play, and I'm really excited that that's getting back into, I shouldn't say back, but is a focus of the Brezner Hand. I also really like that the school as a whole, and I've seen this in a few of their documents, how coherent their instructional model is, and it's becoming even more coherent, I think, every year, that I like see additional documents. And this is an indication of what the school's instructional vision is, how they believe that our students learn the best, that they learn through play, and this is how we're going to deliver our lessons, this is what we expect of teachers, this is the type of lesson plans that we believe in, and you're trying to get that through line across all your teachers, starting with 17, which is amazing to say, this is how our kids learn the best. And I would love to continue to see that. It might not be the same philosophy, right? Because we're dealing with our youngest learners, but in the Mullen and the NOC specifically, it's like, how do those teachers believe that kids learn best, and how is that coming out into And how is that coming out into the classroom? So this is just a really amazing thing I'm seeing at the Brezner Hand. And then I would love to see this in their school plans that they're developing and updating, is where's the through line to say, these are the initiatives we're taking on, these are the actions we're taking on, that evaluation components kind of already there? Like, what are our expectations for teachers, and what are we hoping to see at the end of it? Just so that it's all carried through, so that the same initiative is showing up in a variety of places that just adds to the focus.
A couple of points to that. I think it's, this grant was easy for us to write, because it fits really well with our portrait of a graduate. And the work that we've been doing around that, that culminated sort of on Friday or of last week, around working with teachers for about six months on what is powerful learning? How do we define it? What does it look like? What do students think is powerful learning? And how can we kind of distill that down to? What the work that we did was, let's distill that down to three words, and then let's use those three words to guide our instructional philosophy. And so having done that work vertically, K through 12, with a team of administrators and teachers, and then rolling it out Friday for the full day, the idea is to have an inspired learning day on March 27th or 28th? I can't remember which is the day. Whatever's the half-day Friday in March, where the whole district will be each building in different ways, contributing to or building an opportunity for students to have inspired learning. But at the same time, our goal is to inspire the teachers as well, to feel like they are inspired by their own teaching, they're inspired by teaching, and to kind of bring that all together vertically, exactly like you're saying. So different pockets of work. There are some teachers in the PLC of 17 right now who are at the Mullen School. As a part of their work, they've been already this year doing a Friday program, then I'm trying to remember the name of, Discovery Friday is not right, but it's something like that. And it's a drop-in kind of playful learning project that they have a lot of different theme goes on. So for example, last Friday it was light, and what was happening in there is there's stations. So playful learning, you're still going after the standards and the content, but you're looking at ways for young people to have choice and curiosity within, within the work. So I was there on Friday when Martha Trails class was there. There's six different stations that students can go around and play with, the idea of light in a variety of different ways. And you find some students who might stick with the same station for the whole hour, and other students who are flipping around, doing a lot of different things. One fun thing that they had going there is this thing called a grif graph, which allows you to like animate, using this little machine, the students could create like a little paper animal or character, and then you could animate it using the, a picture kind of based philosophy. So they're looking at how does light work in photography? So it's all kind of, I think, coming together, like you said, cohesively. And I think what's holding it all together for us is this portrait of a graduate vision, and continuing to come back to what is our philosophy of education and teaching, and what are our goals, and how are we measuring them?
So yeah, thank you. What does PLC stand for?
Oh, Professional Learning Community.
Thank you. And at the, does like, I mean, I'm, I'm sure the grant has some sort of report out requirements? Is that anticipated?
Some of the money that goes back to the state is actually for a evaluation team that comes in and gives us a formal evaluation, which would be awesome. So often we're charged with doing our own evaluation, and I don't know anybody who's ever done that. It's actually like own world in of itself, so it would be really nice for us to be working with people who do that professionally.
Great. And when, does that happen towards the end?
Yeah, it's an 18-month cycle, so we won't be, not finished until the end of the next school year.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah. Yeah, I think this is great, on so many levels. I have a couple of questions. One is just thinking that if there's any opportunity, or if it's written into the grant, to maybe utilize either some training and being able to purchase materials, say, for the school counselors to bring more play therapy into their work with students. So I, I see like a carryover there.
Yeah. I'm trying to remember if we have a school counselor on the team, and I can't remember, but yes, that's, that's great to be thinking about. We are partnering with Newburyport RAC and Youth Services. So that was also kind of written into our grant. They have their own initiative happening for free play. Those things I think will fit very nicely together. And we do have a meeting, actually this week, with Youth Services to try to look, look at maybe how we're doing some of our summer camp programs a little bit differently as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been going to those meetings with the Free Play Initiative with Youth Services. So yeah, I mean, there's such, it, it's just kind of wonderful to have both, the opportunity at school, and then what can be carried over into the community.
Yeah. I think a good opportunity with that has also been some nice conversations between like the rec department and the school department, is the Pedagogy of Play talks about the spectrum of a very adult directed to completely free play on the, on the kid's side. And depending on what you're doing in school, you, you're not going to always be over here. Youth Services might really want to be over here a lot, and we might be kind of finding ourselves somewhere in the middle. And so to be able to work together, it's like free play in school is a little bit different than the notion of free play outside in your neighborhood, perhaps.
But there is definite carryover in both dimensions, because they're going to, thinking about closing streets, people can, on a certain day, for a couple hours after school, there'll be like a, I don't know, like a head person, a responsible adult. I volunteer for my street, but they accept me. But that person will be sort of the go-to, so that kids can be outside, there'd be, you know, they would bring out their own materials. But if there's an issue that they can't manage themselves in terms of working together with other kids, being able to problem solve situations, then the, the adult could be asked by the kids to come in and step in and help facilitate, if needed. So I, I mean, I think that it's just going to be a really, you know, if they're doing this at school.
Right.
And then doing it at home. I think there is going to be more carryover than we realize.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Member Shaw, maybe after you go into your next, if you attend the next one, you could just give us a little report out on that, on what the progress is on.
On the, um...
Because I know a number of us got invited, and I, I haven't been able to go, but I would love to hear more about what's going on.
Well, you also have a teacher who's on the Playful Learning Grant, who is also a member of that.
Great. Great. It's very, it's exciting that all you guys are collaborating with NYS as well. Any other questions on the Playful Learning Grant?
No, but I can tell you one more thing.
Okay, Member Shaw.
I have no questions. I don't want to toot my own horn, but I'm meeting with...
Two, two.
What? I'm meeting with Tara from Youth Services, who coordinates a lot of the middle school stuff, because I run a LARPing program in our, at our summer program, and we may be bringing LARPing.
LARPing?
Love action, role play.
Okay.
In case you're wondering.
In case you're wondering.
All right, if we could just try to focus back on the Playful Learning Grant. Any other questions, Mr. McSweeney?
It is playful.
Oh, no, mine, mine was related to LARPing.
Are you into LARPing?
No, I just haven't, I haven't heard much about it, and it sounds fascinating to me. Now is not the time for it.
Yeah, we'll have a sidebar. I can get you up to speed. It's amazing. It's such a good time.
Very exciting stuff. Thank you so much for participating. Appreciate it. Okay, so next item on our agenda is not LARPing. It is, the subcommittee updates. Finance Subcommittee is the first one on our list.
We did not meet. We could not reach a quorum, so we didn't have a meeting. But I went in and spoke with the superintendent and Jim Antonelli, just because I want to get the athletic fees conversation going. We talked like half an hour, I guess, and I believe there's a recommendation for skiing to be changed, because currently, recently I should say, the kids were paying X and then paying for lift tickets, which is not cool. So we're going to try and fix that. We should figure out what the number is, that would now be the new fee, and we're waiting on Jim's recommendation. Ms. Walker had asked me if maybe the FinCom could meet before the next school committee meeting. I don't know if that is possible. I wouldn't mind, I don't, I don't feel that we need to have a pre-meeting to talk about those numbers, because I don't think anything's going to move except for skiing of all the tiers. I think the tiers are going to remain the same, or it's going to be recommended they remain the same. So if we can't end a meeting next week, then I'd like to have it on the agenda for the third, if that works for you.
Yeah, I think that's what we discussed, although I would, I don't, I don't, I just wonder if we need to try to fit in another FinCom meeting, just for the fact that it is budget season and, you know.
It would be after next, it would be after the next school committee meeting. Once February break, this week of the 17th?
Yeah.
So it'll be the week of the 10th. And then when's the next meeting, the 18th? Is that correct? Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I don't...
Well, we can, we don't have to decide right now about FinCom, but I, I'm trying, I didn't know if anyone has any objections to the, the fees coming before the subcommittee, before it goes to FinCom? Anyone concerned about that?
Did you say the new ADU is supposed to be decided on by the 31st?
Yeah, the new, the, for next year?
She did say by the end of this month, which is soon.
They won't start till next year.
No, I didn't.
No, they won't start until July 1st.
Got a leg up on how this has evolved over the years.
You can always watch your opinions.
Yes. That's it.
Policy Subcommittee, Miss Shaw.
We will be having a meeting coming up on the 7th, I believe. And yeah, and we will be talking about policy.
All right.
And you and I will schedule...
We will, we will connect.
A tutorial, yes. Yes, it will, it will all become clear. It will be amazing, so no worries.
Very much. It'll be awesome.
It's going to be great.
Communications Subcommittee, Miss Hall.
Yes. So our first meeting of the new year is this Thursday, the 23rd. Sent out a reminder email today. Get it? Hopefully. Good. NOC Library at 6:30. And I also invited the superintendent and Ms. Furlong. I'm hoping at least one of you can, can attend.
Will be there.
The agenda will start by planning out our meetings through the end of June. I don't feel we need to go beyond that, because we might want to reassess at the summer retreat. But I'm hopeful that we can come up with a mutually agreeable monthly, love to have a standing monthly time that we meet. I've already had a preliminary conversation with Council President Ed Cameron, and I will follow up with him before we meet on Thursday, just so I have his input. He is thinking about a time that would work for the general government committee. So they wouldn't come every time, of course, but when they did, they would double post with us so that the whole general government committee could be in attendance. They were still in the process of sorting out their meetings calendar, because they're doing this three-week, as we know, the three-week rotation. Of course, that impacts when their meetings are happening as well. So he, he did think he could have a little more information for me before we meet on Thursday, so we can sort that out. And then the rest of the meeting, I'd like to dedicate to 2024 in review. There's been some good communication successes from the past year, and then looking at best practices moving forward into the new year. So that's it.
Great. Thanks, Miss Hall. And I also want to just say, Member Hall agreed to continue to do the newsletter, which I appreciate, because I thought she's done a great job to date, and it's just one less thing that I have to worry about. Appreciate, thank you for doing that. All right, Teaching and Learning Subcommittee.
Our first meeting will be next Monday, the 27th, at 6:30 at the NOC Library. The, the main focus of that agenda will be recommendations from the district on the competency determination.
Great. All right, and anything to report on superintendent evaluation?
Not yet, but there'll be stuff coming out here in the weeks and months ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. All right, and then next item on the agenda, superintendent's report.
All right. I provided just some bullet points in your packets, just on some key topics, just to update cell phone use in schools, kind of where we've been and kind of where we're at at this point. I won't read you the whole, the whole document here. But you can see there's been, I think, a lot of work at the high school, behind the scenes, with Mr. Wolf, his faculty and administration, really doing, I think, a couple important aspects, the senior class reading the book Accountable, and then utilizing that on how to self-regulate around the device. And I think at our next school committee, some of those students will come in and talk to the school committee, and kind of how that has really impacted, how they've actually, some of the students have been shifting the use of the devices. And then in late November, Katie Greer, Assistant DA, worked with juniors, they broke up in small groups, and she really kind of went through social media and some of the things that they're seeing at the state level, where, where people get themselves in trouble. And I think that really resonated with both the juniors and the seniors. And then Mr. Wolf has taken those senior leaders, and has really been working in the advisory and working with the freshmen and sophomores, kind of talking about that whole idea on cell phones and cell phone use. So I think it's been a great dialogue for the high school community since the beginning of the school year to where we're at. And then I'll have Mr. Wolf come in at our next school committee to kind of talk about the next steps. Down the road is, I believe it will be very similar to the community dialogue that, that we've had in the past with different topics, that would be working with, I think, some of the parent groups and the parents, working with the kids and having to construct a dialogue around cell phones to see where, you know, where we land. But I just wanted to really credit the high school, because it's been something that they've been working on as a school community since the beginning of the year. I provided one email that, from a teacher, that was really impressed with the work that's been going on, and some of our veterans who did some of the presentations at the, during November Veterans Day, were taken back and actually noticed how the students were attentive in, in that audience. None of the students had cell phones out. And the teacher, I think, credited Mr. Wolf and the faculty in the entire school for really sending the message home about self-regulation with that. So that's kind of where we're at, and I just wanted to provide everybody, you know, with the update. At the other schools, I think coming into this school year, it's been a priority, wait for the day. And when we're looking at cell phone violations at the middle school and elementary, it's very, you know, it's not happening as much, but it's, I really believe it's just been a conversation throughout our school community.
And if we could just pause there?
Surely.
I mean, we talked about it at our retreat, and we wanted to have something on the agenda. So I think this is just the, the first report out.
Correct.
But we can, as, as superintendent alluded to, we can have, plan to have an agenda item, both to hear from Mr. Wolf, but also give it an opportunity for the school committee to decide, you know, have a discussion about whether there's some policy that needs to be in effect at the district level, or, you know, and I think staff maybe can be prepared to, to recommend what they think about that, whether it makes sense to change policy at the district level, that would help or hurt, or not have no impact on what you're already doing. But are there any questions on, on that topic? Any members? Yeah.
Can you say a bit more about the community dialogue, and how that would be a part of any decision-making process?
I'll hold off until when Mr. Wolf gets here.
Okay.
But very similar to what we did...
That bell-sell conversation, right?
Yeah, the bell-sell. And then also, if you recall, with the tragedy of George Floyd, we did the whole community dialogue around race and around just mercy.
Yes.
So I think the high school is used to taking some topics that are in the mainstream that may be controversial, and kind of bringing the, you know, the community together. So I, I would foresee something like that down the road, but I don't want to jump the gun.
Sure.
With Mr. Wolf. And remember, Mr. Wolf is working also, not only with the faculty and support staff, but really going through the student council and school council. So there's a lot of, a lot of stakeholders in the high school at the table, understanding the concerns, and then I think really just trying to mitigate it through the dialogue and kind of finding, you know, what's the best solution for Newburyport High School, so.
Yeah, there are questions on this topic?
No, I'd just say thank you to the superintendent for picking up the ball last spring when this came up, and really running with it, and fortifying at this point, because there's been a lot more movement than I think people were aware of. And thank you to the vice chair for being proactive, doing the same as well as the mayor. There's a lot of interest in this topic, continues to grow. I think, I think it is worth saying that we, we have a very responsive superintendent, and the principals are, are great on these things. And sometimes an issue comes up, and I, I don't think people realize how often the superintendent's time gets taken up with these things. So there are times when meetings happen, and oh, that's of interest to three parties, and then they felt, they feel heard, and that's great. And other times it's of interest to 30 parties. And, you know, this is one that's currently of interest to 300 to 500. So I just think that we, we need to be communicative about how, how much work is happening behind the scenes, so that we can present in front as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And you want to continue?
Yes. I, I just wanted to kind of, every time we bring up negotiations, I kind of put a timeline in the hours that we've already been spending on negotiations. And once again, I want to credit, I think, the school committee and our interest-based bargaining techniques, because we started bargaining a lot earlier than many of these other districts that kind of ran into trouble. And plus, we're using interest-based bargaining, which is a different type of bargaining than positional bargaining. So it's really a collaborative process. So these are the multiple meetings that we've had. We've had some tentative agreements on, you know, some language and some things with the NTA. We started our compensation discussions that will probably continue for our next few meetings, which is obviously the big piece of bargaining. And then also, we begin our instructional assistant bargain. The last union that we met with was ASME Union, it's our smallest union, but we already worked with them and shared interests. So I think for all three bargaining units, we're in a, in a pretty good place right now. And once again, credit our school committee members that are on the, on the team, and then also the school community for, for the support as we go through this. There was a couple of dates, the, the two upcoming, so our 127, that's actually going to be an IA negotiations, and then the NTA negotiation is going to be 129. But you can see, there's a lot of members in the, obviously, NTA is, you know, 268 members, and then our IA Union's 54, and then ASME collectively is 53, so.
All right. Any questions on that item? And thank you, the members who are assisting with that.
And then last but not least, I was going to credit Mr. McSweeney, but he's here, so I won't give him too many compliments. He'll hold me to it. No, James McSweeney, I think, has been a great addition, taking over for Steve Burcom, who, you know, we, we felt like couldn't be replaced. And, you know, Steve has been, was with us for 20 years, and I see James is almost like a younger Steve, coming in and...
That's high praise.
That is high praise.
No offense, Steve, I'm sure you're watching at home.
I'm sure he, I'm sure he is watching. But no, so part... But no, so, part of, you know, James has really hit the ground running, but, so, part of this working with the NEF and the New Media Lab in reconstruction, that space, Mr. McSweeney's been instrumental in providing that. So, part of where we're at is the final design plans have been made, the architects we've purchased, the technology equipment. We're working on the audiovisual equipment. But a big change in this, instead of going out to bid, Mr. McSweeney will serve as our general contractor. So, that saves a couple things. One, the timeline, so we can expedite this project getting done, hopefully with at least two months left in the school year, so our students will be able to access the New Media Lab, and then also the cost savings of having Mr. McSweeney as a general contractor, and then also having the ability to utilize local vendors. So, it's been a great shift there, and we're really excited about this new space. We showed at the retreat, we showed the video, and we've been talking about Portrait of a Graduate and talking about students' portfolio. And this Media Lab is really just going to be, offer a lot of opportunities for our students to communicate, not only their, their learning and their portfolio, but just also to really, I think, take the learning to a whole new level. So, we're really excited about that. We're very appreciative, obviously, of the NEF, but Mr. McSweeney's role in assisting us with this project, so that's kind of where we're at right now.
Great. Any projects planned for that last eight weeks of the year?
Well, I think what's nice with Stephanie Phillips and our team, Media Lab team, and really the Performing Arts team, is they're already doing a lot of this work, you know, downstairs in that basement with equipment that we've upgraded. But, so, they're just going to be able to take a lot of what they're already doing in a whole new space with all, you know. So, I really believe, once they move in, we're really going to have a lot, you know, a lot of students will have more accessibility to really create some of these great, great projects, so.
Well, it might be worth trying to schedule a tour.
Yes, 100%.
If you can coordinate that. Any questions? Yeah, Member Shaw?
Just a question slash, slash suggestion, so although it sounds like he's already taking on a lot of work, I don't want to sign him up for more, but this in particular could be a really good opportunity to get some of the high school kids involved that are interested in that line of work, or might want to explore that line of work. So, kids who might be in the Peterson Program, who are interested in the trades, but also kids that, you know, might be interested in engineering, civil engineering, construction management, if there is a small group that could shadow him for a day, or just learn about, like, what does it mean to be a general contractor, what's involved in that type of work? Because I think, you know, sometimes you, you don't know all the jobs that are out there, right? You don't know jobs that exist unless you've, you've heard about them. And sometimes you think construction is guys that show up at your house and build your addition, right, or fix your kitchen, and there's so much more to it than that. And so, it just could be a really good onsite learning experience for some kids.
Great suggestion.
No, no. You don't have to come up.
You have to come up. We don't need to.
Well, I was just going to say, so, Aaron, who does the College Current Council Office, I mean, I could definitely work with him and see if he's heard from any of the kids.
Great, oh, yeah, that's a great idea. Any other questions for the Superintendent? All right, thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you.
And then on the next item on the agenda is follow-up items. The two that we had on our radar, and if there are others that people are aware of, please feel free to let me know before the next meeting. But one was the hybrid meeting, which I don't believe that's our current one, right, Mr. Callahan? That's somebody else's. It's labeled Planning Department?
No, that'd be the Playing Department. But we do have the new version of that sitting in my office.
In your office, that's what I thought you still had. Okay, so, we are going to try to do a Zoom meeting, hybrid meeting, for the next school committee meeting, which I just wanted to make sure we had a little test, opportunity to do a test before that. But I will work with the Superintendent, and I believe we're going to have someone helping with that.
Correct.
From the staff side. So, stay tuned, we'll try to do that for the next meeting. The intention is to allow public comment via Zoom, because otherwise, people can watch this meeting over cable access. It's not necessary to have Zoom to watch the meeting, but some people may choose to watch it over Zoom, which I know some people do, for some reason, for city council. Maybe it's easier when you're not at home or something, so. So, we'll work on that before the next meeting. And then the other item was retreat notes, and in your pocket, you'll have two sets of notes. One is the, sorry, one is the school committee objectives, sort of how operational objectives, and what we thought we could maybe work on, or what we're doing well, mainly what we can work on. And I just flagged those in that table that's in your pocket with what we voted on as a group, so you'll know, some don't, we don't think we need to work on, so it's basically norms and operating principles, things we should be thinking about as we, as we go forward over the next six months, and then we can periodically revisit and just see how we're doing. Any, and then the next one was the summary of the, our discussion around intervals between now and June. So, particularly for members of subcommittees, if you can kind of reference this, there were some sort of recommended actions that came out of that discussion, some of those following mainly in a, in a subcommittee kind of purview to then recommend to the full school committee. So, if you could take a look at that, and also, feel free to let me know if I didn't get anything right, if I got something wrong, or if somebody needs to be fixed. So, take a look at that. We can, we can always adapt these, adjust these if they're not representing what we discussed, but I did take our notes and tried to do our best, my best to what we talked about.
Just want to say thank you for putting this together. It's really helpful.
You're welcome. Well, hopefully, it'll be useful, and, yeah, like I said, if people notice there's anything missing from that list, I mean. All right, so, the last item on the agenda is new business. Anything to report from CPOT?
No.
Other new business items? Yeah, Mr. Callahan?
I wouldn't say it's new business, but I went to the Budget and Finance last Thursday with Superintendent and Mr. McSweeney, and they voted to push the water heater out of committee, which is good. That is one of the reasons this warrant is so large, by the way. It's $160,000 in that. So, hopefully, they go to their main committee meeting and vote at 11-0.
Great, that's good news. Thank you for going to that, and Superintendent as well. Yeah.
And just have, the Human Rights Commission, we have tomorrow night, Holocaust Remembrance Day, we have Evening with Debbie Colton, featuring stories of survivors' children during the Holocaust, so that will be at the NOC tomorrow, tomorrow night, that will be that.
And if you come, wear your human rights knitted hat, please.
I'm going to wear my shirt, too.
You're going to wear your black and white clothes.
After, after Football Housing Trust.
I guess we can announce that we're, everybody less Ms. Hall or performing on Saturday night at the City Talent Show. Mr. Gallagher is super excited to be the lead vocalist.
Sure, yeah. A lot of practice.
Thank Member Callahan for putting in the extra effort on the musical arrangement.
We go on the first act right after the intermission, so roughly 7:45.
Okay, good to know.
That's very specific.
Members of the public, stay tuned. It's free tickets, but you are in hurts for some reason.
It's been like 200, 200 advance, advance free tickets, I guess? That's a lot for that room, right?
Yeah. Mayor, do you have a second?
No.
Oh, okay. Any other new business?
Can I just, in light of yesterday's inauguration, and information that came forth, some of which was outright surprising, particularly Trump saying there are only two genders, male and female, I think that it will be important in the coming days and weeks to support students who do not identify as male or female. And I think we need to think about what that all means, and to look at the support systems within the schools, and for staff, teachers, counselors, whoever, to kind of, you know, check in with kids who have, who have openly identified their gender preference or their non-binary status. So, I think it's really, I know of kids in this community and in other local communities that after the November election were really stressed out, and now, I think, with that clear statement yesterday, I think that is really very concerning to queer folk. So, I think we have to be really cognizant of that and, and look carefully to make sure everybody is feeling safe, supported, seen and heard.
Thank you, Member Shaw. And I also would like to just add that not only students, but staff in our schools also feel supported.
Correct, yes.
And thank you, thank you for saying that. Anything else? All right, that is all, so I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks, all.